The Regent's to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'm vassal a moment of silence, you can either sit or stand, whatever you prefer. It's a moment of silence for our country and our world and everything that's going on right now, and it's just for our military and in a matter of respect. Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to approve item one.
I will second that motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the minutes of January 8th, 2020, and a second by Commissioner Herschel. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item two.
I will second that motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to amend the minutes of the January 6th, 2020, Commissioners' meeting to reflect Commissioner Arnold closing the meeting, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item three.
I will second that motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to change the location of the Assessment and Revision Board meetings to the Commissioners' meeting room, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve four.
I will second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall to correct the motion 15 on the January 8th, 2020 agenda by changing the hourly rate of the full-time corrections officer from 1451 to 1496, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to see a higher wage for corrections officers. That not even $15 an hour is not even a living wage, and I think you should have a higher wage because you keep losing these people. They keep going to other places. These goofy phones.
Yes, we're aware of that. Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, so please give them more money so you don't lose them and they can go and they can stay here in the county.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bureau. They're under a union contract, so they have to deal with that, but thank you and we'll take that into consideration.
Okay, you're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed. Number five. I would like to make a motion, number five. Motion by Commissioner Herschel to correct the motion 18 on the January 8th, 2020 agenda from hiring to the appointment of Francis X. O'Connor as the county solicitor. I will second that motion. Questions or comments?
And why did Jean Greco leave? Why was he fired? Was he...
No, there was... The solicitor position is in appointed position by the Board of Commissioners, so it was just a changing of the guards, if you will. It was just a new appointment.
But it was asked last time to get a reason...
Yeah, so you have no reason why you changed solicitors, why you reappointed somebody else? You must have a reason. You don't just do things for nothing.
Just thought it was time for a change. New eyes, new board.
Yeah, you got tired of Jean Greco?
He did a fine job.
Well, my question is that all of these other ones that's been brought up in the past were the same, and I don't have any objections to O'Connor at all either, but the others were, if you look at any of these agendas, at least the others were, you know, with regret or some kind of comment to thank them for their service, and it was not done with him. And I felt it was very disgraceful, the way this was done.
Okay, thank you for your comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, okay. Motion number six.
Motion to approve six.
I will second that motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Hall and a second by Commissioner Herschel for the Disbursement Journal. Any questions or comments?
Yes. Can you tell us a little bit about what goes into the general expenses that's mentioned twice here?
These are our bills that run the county. These are all the bills that we pay, from children and youth expenses, general expenses, net wages, the Plicott expenses, federal payroll. Pretty self-explanatory. These are the bills that we have to pay every month and yearly.
But it's not self-explanatory. Are these general expenses broken out when you look at the budget?
Yes, they are. They're included in everybody's budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Motion to approve seven.
I will second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the filing of seminar requests and payment for seminar requests, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments?
Yes. What positions are held by the individuals that'll be receiving this training?
Bruce Butler, Brad Ellsworth, Jeff Felinek, they're in our 911 and our EMA. Mark Shelpe, Joshua Weller runs our prison. Chad Weaver is in Children and Youth.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve eight.
I'll second that motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Arnold, to sign the amendment of the tower lease for San Susana County, Daniel Kopic, Eric Kopic, and Natasha Kopic for a lease in the amount of $24,000 per year effective December 31st, 2019 through December 31st, 2020, per the recommendation of Bruce Butler. All in favor? Or questions and comments? I'm sorry.
This is a tower lease for what? Just for 911?
Yeah.
And you're paying $24,000 per year for this?
Yeah.
And where is this tower? Where is this property? What township?
I believe this is in Clifford Township. Is it not in Clifford Township? No, just in Susquehanna Township. We have one in Clifford and one in Susquehanna, I'm sorry.
And you're paying also in Clifford, also $24,000?
I believe that's a different amount. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Number nine.
Motion to approve nine.
I will second that motion. A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the MOU with Penn State Extension for services with 4-H Master Gardeners and Programming, effective January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020, in the total amount of $170,126.15 to be made in quarterly payments. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you explain more about what the service is that 4-H Master Gardener and the programming actually involve?
Well, we have one of the biggest 4-H programs in the state, I'm proud to say, as well as our Master Gardeners program. We have close to 50 people in our Master Gardeners program and over 300 children, about 340 children, in our 4-H program. And so this is all through Penn State, and we help them with funding.
But I thought those were volunteer positions, so I'm not sure where, you know, $170,000 is going.
No, your 4-H leaders are volunteers, which we couldn't do the program without our volunteers. We're very fortunate that we have the volunteers that we have in this county, but the Penn State runs our program. This pays for our educator, the office staff, and the assistant down there.
Okay, so this pays for the employee wages, then?
Yes.
Seems like a lot of money for that.
It is, yeah. And where is this office where these people are being paid?
It's on 88 Shenango Street, right?
So they're being paid for their services? So they're from Penn State? They're not like, are they local people?
Well, they're local people. We've been fortunate enough to find local people right here in the county that fill the positions.
Huh.
But they're Penn State employees.
And how many people are being paid? They're $170,000?
There's three people down there at this time, three and a half, I think. We have a summer injured, right?
And is this your budget normally? Like, last year was similar? How many years have you been paying this? This been going on for a while?
It's gone up a little bit over the last couple of years, just because of expenses going up, but it was in this ballpark last year.
So who's the head of this office now?
Sarah Sesson is our 4-H educator.
What is the average salary paid to these people?
You know, I don't have that answer. I'll have to get back to you on that.
So if it's three people, I could divide $170,000 by three and come up with that number? Is that true? They might have different ones. If she's the director, she might, Sarah might get more than the others.
Yeah, but on their... I'll have to look into their salaries. I don't have that number in my head. I'm sorry. Can I get a... Sir, did you have a question?
Well, as long as we're on the salary, is she still on salary for anything, for anything else?
Sarah Sesson?
Uh-huh.
Not that I'm aware of. She was on our election board the last election. Is that what you're talking about?
What did she make for that?
Alan, can you answer that question? If you can.
I don't know. I've got my...
We'll have to look into that and get back to you with that.
Okay.
All right. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve number 10.
I will second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the sending of postcards to all active voters in Susquehanna County to inform of changes to the upcoming primary election, including dates and deadlines, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments?
Yes. This doesn't show a cost.
We don't have an exact cost on it now. Commissioner Hall's has been around $8,000 or $9,000. We talked about this just last Friday, actually. Was there another question?
This is going to include information regarding Act 77?
I don't believe it is. It's a postcard. It's giving you the dates and the changes on it. I don't believe it's going that far.
Well, you could put a link to a website for it to find out what it's about, because it's going to affect all of us.
Okay, we can take that under consideration?
It's on the postcard.
Is it on the postcard? Okay, right at the very bottom.
Right on the front.
Okay, all right.
Quarter of a train.
The changes of the dates of all the election and the deadlines of when you can register and now you can vote. We're going to have a precinct here, actually, and you'll be able to vote, everybody will be able to ask and to vote, that type of thing. We can get your postcard as soon as we get it printed yesterday.
I would like to make a comment about the change to the election laws. Voting by mail is overwhelmingly open to fraud.
Yep.
Whether you are left, right, middle, or from out of space. Incredible fraud. So there's my comment. So I hope that you're going to prepare very carefully for that.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you for your comment.
Motion to approve.
Your motion? You got it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 11.
I will second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve and purchase the two hydraulic dock doors and one shelter for the doors at the Susquehanna County Recycling Center at the cost of $12,581, per the recommendation of Director of Maintenance Jim Hawley. I have a second by Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments?
Are you still losing money at the recycling plant? Are you making any profit, or what's the story?
I don't think we're making any profit.
Still losing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 14.
I will second that motion. A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the replacement of the control panel on the sewer system at the SCCF at a cost of $16,422, per the recommendation of Director of Maintenance Jim Hawley. I have a second by Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments?
And what's SCCF?
It's the prison.
Correctional Facility. Oh, the prison.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into the web program enrollment agreement, C cap Technology Web Services for web hosting and platform update, the Chemico EMS software and support for one-time payment of $7,500, effective January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020, per the recommendation of IT Director Steven Janowski. I have a second from Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 13.
I will second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve and purchase the two hydraulic dock doors and one shelter for the doors at the Susquehanna County Recycling Center at the cost of $12,581, per the recommendation of Director of Maintenance Jim Hawley. I have a second by Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments?
Are you still losing money at the recycling plant? Are you making any profit, or what's the story?
I don't think we're making any profit.
Still losing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 14.
I will second that motion. A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the replacement of the control panel on the sewer system at the SCCF at a cost of $16,422, per the recommendation of Director of Maintenance Jim Hawley. I have a second by Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments?
And what's SCCF?
It's the prison.
Correctional Facility. Oh, the prison.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall to accept any price negotiated by the Tax Claim Bureau to sell free and clear from the 2020 repository properties with the taxing district's written approval, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments?
And when will they, when will they sell these things? Is there a date for the selling of free and clear?
I'll have to ask Jason Miller, your treasurer. We'll have to ask him.
Jason Miller?
Please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When do you get your answer then?
I'll second that motion.
She keeps telling us that she'll get back to you.
A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve ties for public bid, one Smith-Hymen x-ray unit from the Susquehanna County Correctional Facility, serial number 7144, in the newspaper and on munisabid.com, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments?
Can you explain how that's going to work?
And is there a price for it? There's no price on there.
Yeah.
What's it going to cost?
Got it. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. $74,894.94. Melissa Jackman has put in a bid of $6,600 on the Chevy Equinox.
And what's the mileage on these cars? Is it over $100,000?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have, are we all in favor of accepting these bids on these two vehicles?
Yeah.
Yes, aye. Number 12.
Motion to approve 12.
I will second that motion. Motion from Commissioner Hall to enter into the web program enrollment agreement, C cap Technology Web Services for web hosting and platform update, the Chemico EMS software and support for one-time payment of $7,500, effective January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020, per the recommendation of IT Director Steven Janowski. I have a second from Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 13.
I will second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve and purchase the two hydraulic dock doors and one shelter for the doors at the Susquehanna County Recycling Center at the cost of $12,581, per the recommendation of Director of Maintenance Jim Hawley. I have a second by Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments?
Are you still losing money at the recycling plant? Are you making any profit, or what's the story?
I don't think we're making any profit.
Still losing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 14.
I will second that motion. A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the replacement of the control panel on the sewer system at the SCCF at a cost of $16,422, per the recommendation of Director of Maintenance Jim Hawley. I have a second by Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments?
And what's SCCF?
It's the prison.
Correctional Facility. Oh, the prison.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall to accept any price negotiated by the Tax Claim Bureau to sell free and clear from the 2020 repository properties with the taxing district's written approval, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments?
And when will they, when will they sell these things? Is there a date for the selling of free and clear?
I'll have to ask Jason Miller, your treasurer. We'll have to ask him.
Jason Miller?
Please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When do you get your answer then?
I'll second that motion.
She keeps telling us that she'll get back to you.
A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve ties for public bid, one Smith-Hymen x-ray unit from the Susquehanna County Correctional Facility, serial number 7144, in the newspaper and on munisabid.com, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 17.
I will second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the purchase of EMV Fire and Police Protocol Software Implementation Training and Go Live processes from APCO Institute, per the recommendation of Bruce Butler, Director of Public Safety, 911, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments?
Can you explain how that's going to work?
And is there a price for it? There's no price on there.
Yeah.
What's it going to cost?
Got it. $74,894.94.
Oh, boy. That's the price for all the software, training, the whole thing?
Yeah.
And can you tell us how that's going to work?
Classes, EMD, guide card rack, law enforcement class, six weeks, law enforcement instructor upgrade, law enforcement student manual, fire class online, six weeks, fire instructor upgrade.
And are you going to include, make sure you have all this gas, since we have the gas industry here so prominent? Make sure they get trained for any kind of fires, explosions? Is that's going to be included in there? And dealing with chemicals, since we have chemicals going through town every hour under high pressure? So make sure they get trained for that.
Where's the payment from this coming out of? 911 funding?
Does the Go Live process, is what I have questions about, how that works? Is that something that, you know, Go Live, does that mean that it's going to be transmitted like for everybody online? Is that what goes over the television?
Hmm.
Yeah, it's, part of that is for, is for all the first responders and everything, so they have live interaction with all of them. As far as, there is notification systems for the public. We have some of those now, so those will be included too.
Oh, that is included in that? For the most part, it's mainly for the emergency responders.
Mostly for the emergency responders, but we still have the Code Red system. We still have other alert systems that the public can get on that we still push out to venues for people to know that they can sign up for.
And can you include, make sure it gets better to notify the public? So when you have like, gas leaking from the compressor stations or from a site, that people are notified in that area that they don't have to drive through it and be exposed to that gas. We've had people get exposed to areas where these exposures are happening. We need to be notified on red alert for any gas explosions, any gas leakage, any crashes of these gas vehicles, so that we know if we can, we can avoid it.
Okay.
And is that going to be included? Is that, is that, are people aware of this?
We'll look into all that. So it's all good ideas, Kara. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Motion to approve item 18 with the cost of $52,131.55 from 911 funding.
I will second that. A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the purchase of a 911 recording QA system for Avataide NextLog Interaction Insight Court, New York, at a cost of $52,131.55. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Bruce. I'm sorry.
What is that?
This is more of what's in Bruce's department. Dual hot swap power supplies, equipment, Blu-ray drive, channel input cards and licenses, web access playback licenses, quality assurance licenses, integrated seven-inch color LCD touchscreen displays. It's their equipment and stuff that they use to run their department, screen recording with 10 PCs, installation, programming, and training, ever-tied interface licenses, Tyler CAD integration.
Okay.
Can I ask why these two are separate?
When I talk to Bruce, it's like talking, and he talks another language to me, but he does a fantastic job, his whole department does. We're in good hands there. Okay, can I have a vote on that?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Motion to approve number 19.
I will second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into a right-of-way agreement with Daniel and Rhonda Wright, Clifford, for the Department of Safety, 911 Use of Property Located in Clifford Township, at a cost of $365 per year, per the recommendation of Bruce Butler. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments?
Yeah, do you need any more sites for towers? That's a pretty good deal. $24,000 a year and then $400 for the right-of-way. Do you need any more sites?
I think we're good right now.
You're good right now?
We're good right now. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion 20.
Motion to approve item 20.
I will second that motion. A motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the hiring of Edward "Bocan" Thompson to the open part-time union eligible position at Corrections Officer at 1496 per hour. Varied hours effective January 9th, 2020, with a six-month probation period and benefits according to the jail bargaining unit and the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Warden Mark Shelpe, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments?
Can you find out what they're paying in the other counties? Lackawanna County, Luzerne County for their corrections officers? Because you keep having a massive turnover and flight from this county. So do you know what they're paying in these other counties? Because they want, they want a better job. So this looks like a low pay.
We know.
So what is, what are they paying in Luzerne? Do you know? Find out.
I don't know.
Lackawanna County, Luzerne, all those areas, they're only bordering our county. So let's say they're paying $18 an hour, whatever. You've got to see if you can match it, because you claim this is a rich county.
You can't match a Class II or III county with rural Susquehanna County. The people in our county don't make the money that people in Luzerne County or Lackawanna County make.
You told us this, I keep hearing how it's a rich county. You don't have...
Again, don't twist words, because that's what you're doing.
No, I didn't say you said it.
Don't worry, I'm speaking now.
Good.
Just because some people have gotten gas money doesn't mean everybody in this community has got gas money. We still have the highest rate of kids in schools on free and reduced lunches. So we're not a rich county. Certain people are rich, but the county's not rich.
Well, you haven't had to raise taxes for years, and you seem to be a...
So you're saying we should raise taxes?
No, you shouldn't raise taxes, but you've got to meet this, because you've got a turnover every month, it looks like. I mean...
And we can't compete with state or federal credit.
No? How about Lackawanna County? It's just next door.
Lackawanna County, we're probably comparable.
I wonder, I wonder too what Bradford is paying. They're next door, too. Check them out.
We have.
Thank you.
Commissioner, you said you haven't checked? So what was the salary?
The start, we have found that our start salaries are a little low at the jail. The upper-end salaries are fine, but the start salaries, we do realize they are low. Same with the sheriff's department. We have done a salary survey. We've gotten that information. We've contacted the union and asked to sit down and have a conversation about it. The unions refuse to meet with us.
Is there anything you can do to encourage that meeting to happen?
That makes no sense.
We've done everything we can to encourage the union to meet with us, and they refuse to meet with us.
Would the public help at all again?
Probably not. Enough in the city.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion 21.
Motion to approve 21.
I will second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the hiring of Brent "The Sagney", is that my saying that right? Probably not, "The Sagney". Springville to the open part-time union eligible position at Corrections Officer at 1496 per hour, varied hours, effective January 14th, 2020, with a six-month probation period and benefits according to the jail bargaining union in the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Warden Mark Shelpe. I have a second by Commissioner Herschel. Are there questions and comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 22.
I will second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve with regret the resignation of Tricia Franks from the position of part-time corrections officer, effective January 20th, 2020, per Warden Mark Shelpe, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 23.
I will second that. Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the hiring of Christina Lyons-Montrose to the open part-time union eligible position at Corrections Officer at 1496, per the hour, varied hours, effective January 14th, 2020, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 24.
I will second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall to accept with regret the retirement resignation of Robert Templeton, Director of Planning, effective April 30th, 2020, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments?
With Planning Director Templeton's retirement, that leaves quite a void in that, in that office. And I understand GIS has been kind of operating together, but they, but to the best of my knowledge, those offices have not been officially joined together. Do the commissioners have a plan on how to incorporate the office and prior to this, is that, that retirement date's coming up quick?
Yes, it is. We're aware of that, and we thank Bob. He's been here 30 years, and we're working on that, integrating that. Any comment to that?
As you know, if you go back in your records far enough, you'll find that we took the James Kane, who was in GIS, and he's also, after Allenor left, is the Deputy Director of Planning. So he, of course, has been learning all that stuff and been working with Bob. And as far as the future with the GIS, I would expect most likely that once we get to a plan, that you'll see those departments officially joined. to a plan, that you'll see those departments officially joined.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion number twenty-five.
Motion approved twenty-five.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the termination of Richard Shelton from the position of full-time Corrections Sergeant, Shift Commander, effective January tenth, twenty-twenty, by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor? I don't think that's a comment back there. Aye. Motion by Commissioner Hall to accept the proposal from Rug Fair Commercial and Industrial Company, Incorp, a division of Endwell Rug Company, Endwell, for contract PC six-seven-seven-seven-eight in the amount of thirty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-five-and-fifty cents, the state pricing for courtroom number one renovations, per the recommendation of President Judge Jason Lay. With a second by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments?
Before we get to public comment, because it'll be too late then to ask this question, will the camera be on after the commissioner's meeting right now is over? Because the last two meetings, it was not, you were not able to get it when you went to look for the meeting on YouTube. There was no, it was gone.
Were you during the public comment section, or...?
Yes, they were gone. It just cut off right after the meeting.
Yeah, we were told last week that it would continue to run, and it did not.
It ran, it ran from the beginning until the end of the salary board. It was shut off for a moment, minute. It was put back on for election board. Uh, we had all of our, uh, deputy chief clerk was out sick, so all that came upon me to get on, so it was delayed getting on, uh, the web, but everything is there.
As of when?
No, the comments afterwards were...
Well, once the meeting was, once the meeting was adjourned, um, after the salary board, the cameras did go off, just like it does, it'd normally, then it was restarted for the election board.
Right, but Commissioner Arnold told us last week that it would continue to run through the public comments. Public comments were not taken into consideration for that taping. It was shut off, and it did not air.
But you're saying it shut off on its own volition? Nobody pushed it on?
We've always done, once the meeting is adjourned, after the meeting, the camera's turned off. It's adjourned. Once it's adjourned, it was adjourned, camera was turned off after the salary board, and then restarted after, for the election board. Once the election board was adjourned, it was then turned off as a normal process every week.
But we were told in the beginning of that meeting that it would continue to run through public comments.
So I think the answer to the riddle, if I can, so we can not spend another half hour on this, uh, the camera will be on until the meeting is adjourned. Public comment is before the meeting's adjourned. Once we have public comment, then we adjourn the meeting, then the meeting's done.
Public comments weren't done.
And just for a point of clarity, public comment was taken at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, it was.
But it was also toward the end, because we had some that we had to go back to.
We'll ensure that that part is taped.
Once it's adjourned, it's done.
Yeah, it's timed, prior to the time.
Oh, wow, good.
Yes.
Did the election board meeting come under a separate title? On YouTube?
It's not under a separate title, uh, that I'm aware of. It's under the commissioner's meeting, um, as an election board meeting.
So I would have to go to Susquehanna County Commissioner's meeting of the, of Janu- of January eighth, and I would have to say "election board meetings" to know that it was there?
If you go into, if you're entering it from the YouTube site, uh, you will see the date, and it should be under that.
If I go to the webpage, what am I gonna see on the webpage? I'm gonna see commissioner meeting agendas? I'm gonna see salary board?
I'm just gonna see commissioner's meeting, uh, agenda, I believe.
It's gotta be more specific.
We need to have commissioner's meeting, we need to have salary board, we need an election board. They're all split out separately, so people can see it.
Yeah, and I bring that off.
It's not shut off.
No, I'm saying in between those meetings. Then they are a separate meeting.
Correct. We can get that.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was a lot of public comment right there, but we were on twenty-six, I believe. So, um, can we get, um, a vote on the carpet for the courtroom?
Yes.
Aye, thank you. Okay, now we're public comment, which we did a lot of public comment. Okay, we have a guest here, Mary Ann Holbert is here. Would you? Hello. Thank you for coming. Good morning.
Good morning, cheers.
Everybody who's up.
My name is Mary Ann Holbert. I'm the administrator for the Lockwood Susquehanna Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program Office. And I'm joined today by our advisory board chair, Martin Holbert. We are here today to welcome, uh, the board commissioners. Congratulations on your recent election. And welcome to Commissioner Herschel, and we understand that you've been appointed to represent the board commissioners on our advisory board. And we look forward to working with you for the next four years, uh, to provide, uh, behavioral health, intellectual disability, and early intervention services to the citizens of Susquehanna.
Hi, do. Um, going back to the last meeting, in the minutes from the last meeting, there were, um, a number of motions where Commissioner Herschel was staying, and yet, no reason for an extension to be given.
And that was my answer, to be, it was, um, those were items that were brought up prior to meeting beginning, though I was sworn in on the particular December. I did not start until the sixth. So those decisions made prior to that, I abstained from. Thank you for bringing that up.
But it's just, you know, to have the extension, and a reason for an extension should be on the record. And another one, um, the Excellence in County Government Seminar, both Commissioners Arnold and Herschel are, have been processed to go, but I don't share the belief that only one commissioner or one person per county?
No, only, only, I'm only gonna say this while I'm trying. The, uh, only the C E L program, C E L program can only have one commissioner from each county. And that is, of course, one that I did, uh, but that's a three-day, uh, event that, that takes place. The, and it's actually the Academy of Excellence. The Academy of Excellence is training in county government, in policy procedures, budgeting, and everything else, risk management, and all of that stuff, which are classes that can take in either at conferences, or in trend, or at secret...
Any other comments? We have, we have, did you want to say anything?
No. Okay, I just want to make public, so the public knows the dangers that we face with high-pressure compressed gas trucks that go through Montrose, all the way from Springville, to New Milford, to eighty-one, also from Forest Lake. We get dozens and dozens of them every day. Super-high-pressure compressed gas trucks. They've been in eleven accidents so far, since, in about two and a half years. This is XNG in Forest Lake, NG in Springville. They've lost two drivers to death the past couple of months. One died in New York, driving the trucks. One died in Massachusetts. The one in New York is from Holstead, Pennsylvania. We need to know that they're traveling through Montrose every day. And anything can happen in a more populated section like the borough of Montrose. And I want the public to know what's going on, because I don't read about it anywhere. I don't hear anybody talking about it. And this is something that needs to, we need to be aware of. I don't know what you commissioners can do about it, or what Lance, our sheriff, can do about it. I want him to be aware of it. These trucks have nineteen-seventy-one on them, in a, in a red triangle indicating that they are flammable, they're explosive. So we need to be careful about what's happening to our county, and what has been allowed in this county. So that's my comment for the public.
Thank you for your comment, Vera.
You're welcome.
Along that line, I'd like to add a comment that there is a lot of issues with these trucks speeding through these areas. And I know the Homestead, a twenty-five zone, and I know that is the state police, but a twenty-five zone, you can flock and go through at fifty-five. That's a concern. Thank you. Yes, Kelly?
A bit of a different subject. And, um, last week, we started doing public comment before. You didn't, I guess we kind of expected that, again, this week, because you didn't say that we were gonna change back, but, um, I do appreciate the minutes being put on the website, whoever my website was down again. So that brings me to the internet issues. Have we gotten any farther on any of that? Do we have any updates, um, as far as where we're gonna go with any of that?
Still working on it, still having conversations, still doing investigative work on it. You wanna talk to that, Alan? Put money up for that?
Still doing studies, you know, on the rest paper frontier is about ready to file bankruptcy. We are doing, um, GIS maps overlays of who has fiber optic in the area. We're finding that there is quite a bit of fiber optic out there that people probably don't know about, like from, uh, Zito Media and NEPA, or NEP, and, uh, and from Spectrum. So there's a lot of stuff that's out there. But, uh, studies are still being done. I know there was a big meeting in Washington, uh, on the circus that's going on down there now, uh, that they have about broadband and internet service. So, you know, everybody's talking about trying to figure out a solution to the problem.
I was gonna say, because if they're talking about going out of business like that, where's that leave us with our telephones, too? I mean, there's so many that have...
Somebody will take it over. I mean, it's just a question of who it's gonna be, or is Frontier just, you know, filing bankruptcy for that business and, and started another business to take it over, just to, to shield all their debt? I don't know.
So we're still waiting for, like, last year, you put money into, um, having, um, some kind of surveys and stuff done. We're still waiting for that to come back.
So that's gonna take a while to get done.
Okay, the other, um, comment that I wanted, or question maybe, um, is about the roads. We also discussed some conditions, and I know a lot of this stuff has to do with PENDON and so on and so forth, but I was, I realized the other day that there are, some of the roads, that are state roads, are under contract with our townships. And I understand that there are some townships that have incredible problem getting some of these roads fixed. I know Joseph Township was, which is ours, and I don't go to a lot of the meetings, because, I feel that Joseph Township is doing a good job. Our roads are generally very well taken care of out there. I know they're one of the ones that have contracts with some of these, um, state roads to take care of some of the state dirt roads. So I guess my question is, why do some of the other townships not follow the same, follow the same standard and pick up some of those contracts with them, so that they can take care of these dirt roads for these people?
We have township folks sitting here in the audience, so I don't know how they feel.
You guys wanna jump on that?
Why, jump on that?
Knock yourself out, Ray.
I gotta move now.
It just ain't worth the aggravation. Stuff you have to go through to be able to do it, the paperwork and everything, it just sometimes ain't worth it. There's a lot of paperwork when you start getting involved with PENDON, and the union taking over contracts.
Well, and I'm not sure I'm saying, are you actually taking over a contract, or are you just contracting with, um, them to do a certain part of the job?
You get a section of the roads, so many miles, they'll contract you, they pay you so much a mile, the plows sitting there. And sometimes, it just ain't worth the aggravation. Like, my side, where I am, a little township, it would cost us more money to do that, and we would get back from paying to do that section. We'd have to hire another guy, which, our tax level wouldn't allow us to pay the extra out. We wouldn't make enough off of it. So it's just easy to leave it alone on our end, over our way.
Thank you. Bruce, did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, the state always made the, uh, Joseph Township, they can, uh, we have state roads. The only state road that I know of that we have back, we took over years ago, and we get paid so much a mile. Otherwise than that, that is the only state road that we took back, but that was happened years ago.
And you own that road now?
Yes.
It's not like the state owns it, you're doing the work for it.
And that, but that was turned back to a township road, and that, that is it. We're, we get so much liquid fuels money for it, and that's it. It was back in the early eighties when that was taken back over. But that is the only one that I know of in that township.
Thank you, Bruce, for that. Okay.
A different topic. There's a couple of artesian wells that people get water from, one on Bank Street and one on one-sixty-seven. Have they even been tested to see if they're clean? And if they're not tested, can they be tested?
First of all, it's not our responsibility, they're privately owned wells. So you'd have to talk to the owner of that well down there, and I'm not even sure who owns it at this point.
Other one on Bank Street, I talked to Diaz, maybe?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It could be. You'd have to talk to them about that, Frank.
Okay.
And if there's a certain amount of people that use the wells, I've talked to DEP about it, if there's at least twenty-five people use these so-called private wells, DEP needs to be notified, and they will come in and test.
That's great.
So...
Great, no, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Motion adjourned.
Nobody else wants to speak? That's it?
We've got two more meetings. Okay. Motion by Commissioner, are we good? Commissioner Hall made a motion to close meetings. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned at nine forty-five.
Adjourned, okay.
Salary board.
Now we have a salary board meeting. Call's meeting to order at nine forty-five.
Motion approved item number one.
I'll second that motion. A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the minutes of the January eighth twenty-twenty salary board meeting, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions, questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Item number two, motion approved item two.
I'll second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall to rescind the motion from the January eighth twenty-twenty salary board to eliminate the part-time temporary position of real estate clerk for the sheriff's office, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Approved item number three with a change for the recommendation of Robert Hyde, Chief Clerk.
I'll second that motion with that change in place. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comments on the salary board? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall. I'll second that one. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Meeting's closed at nine forty-five. So we have election board around the hallway.
I have to leave, I'll close another meeting.
You all right? You think they're in the hallway? You have an election board meeting now?
Either way, neither one.
Come on in. Hi.
Good morning.
Hello. Good to see you all. No, he's not, he's done, he's got yours. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Peterson. Hello. Okay, we'll call this, um, election board meeting at nine forty-seven. Now, motion for number one. I'm sorry. Sorry. He's approving that for the November eighth election. Okay, I have a motion by, um, Sarah Sessun, to approve the minutes of the November eighth election board meeting, seconded by Nancy Jackson. board meeting, seconded by Nancy Jackson. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining, we're not-
Part of that, election board, we both abstain. Motion number two? Sarah, I have a motion by Chris Gerson to approve minutes of December 4th election board meeting, seconded by Sarah Sisson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We abstain.
Prior to us.
Motion for number three. I approve the minutes of the January 8th election board meeting.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment? Yeah.
I'd like to know if all of the minutes of all of the meetings of the election board from 2000, beginning of 2019 to the end of 2019 are correct, because I had a request via right to know the minutes of the meetings, and I got them, and I had time to go over the minutes of the meetings, looking at the advertising done for the meetings, and various other things that had to do with the meetings, and I don't think these are a reflection properly of what they actually transpired. Now, I know the February 13th, 2019 meeting was correct because it was taken, the three commissioners were here. The March 28th, 2019 meeting was a casting of lots, and the meeting opened at 12:00 noon, closed at 12:08 on a Thursday, no problem. The May 3rd, 2019 meeting was a meeting with the election board proxies. The meeting opened at 9:00, and it adjourned at 9:07. They reviewed a complaint by the election board, sent to the election board, and at the end of the minutes, it states, Commissioner Hall declared the election board meeting adjourned at 9:07. How could he have been at the meeting and adjourned it? That's number one.
Can we give him a name about the meeting?
The meeting was held on May 3rd. The next meeting was May 24th. The proxy meeting began at 9:00, and it adjourned at 9:15. It states, member solicitor John Griecko called the meeting to order. I don't think that's possible. Motion by Commissioner Warren to approve the minutes of May 3rd, 2019. I don't think that's possible. Seconded by Commissioner Arnold. I don't think that's possible. June 3rd, the meeting opened at 9:00 PM and closed at 9:15 PM. The return board reviewed the provisional ballots for 40 election districts in 15 minutes. I have a sample ballot that came in, and it was absolutely an error. That was a sample ballot back in the spring. The provisional ballots have to really be looked into. You did it in 40 districts in 15 minutes? Okay. Oh, and it was at 9:15 PM. July 3rd, the election board met again at 9:00 PM and adjourned at 9:05 PM, and it was called the Casting of Ties. It's the casting of lots to break ties. All three newspapers where this was noticed, the meeting time was scheduled for 12:00 PM noon, but it took place at 9:00 PM in the evening. Okay? This is the best. September 17th, the board opened at 9:15 AM and adjourned at 9:45. Motion by Member Sisson to approve the minutes of May 24th, 2019, the election board meeting, seconded by Member Caddison. The minutes of May 24th state that Solicitor John Griecko was present at the meeting, and the Commissioner Mary Ann Warren approved the minutes with a second from Commissioner Arnold. Members Sisson motioned to approve those minutes. How can that be? Neither of the commissioners would have been permitted at the September 17th meeting, and they could not have possibly approved minutes for a meeting they never attended. The minutes also state that the election board proofed the 2019 general election ballots. 40 election district ballots proofed along with the other business in a 30-minute meeting? I don't think so. I think the public, these are supposed to be documents that are on file and legitimate and provable, and they're not. I questioned Mary Ann Warren and asked her, were you at that meeting that they said she was at? No. Were you at a meeting? No. I don't think that Commissioner Hall was at a meeting either. This is disgrace, absolute disgrace. These records are supposed to be actually provable, they are public record. This is a falsification of public records. I don't know who wrote these things, but I would like to know, because you were paid with my money.
You have every right to be concerned.
I am very concerned because these are not the facts. These are not the truth. The public has been defrauded. We don't have the, we don't have the board meetings for the election board on tape, we have now to search for them. We have meetings being cut off by whatever process, and then we have this. So you're allowing for these minutes, and I'm wondering, are they true? Did you see the minutes? Or are you just saying, I agree with the minutes? Do you know? Maybe they came off at 9:00, maybe they came off at 1:00 AM in the morning.
I can't answer that.
I know you can't, I know you can't. You're the only one there who cannot.
But what I can't say is that we will definitely-
This has to be looked into, because this has to go to Harrisburg to be determined as to what transpired here.
When we're done here, let me get your information too, and we'll be in correspondence, but I do-
I'm going to make my last remark, that this is despicable, it's disgraceful. This is not where people who have been hired to do a job have done their job, and we paid for it, we paid for it twice, with a proxy board and a regular board. And by the way, one more comment. It would behoove the commissioners, when you have a proxy board, to at least take the minutes and look at them. Don't tell me you're not allowed to do it, you are. You're allowed to sit in an election board meeting because that's your right as a citizen. And if you have a question, damn it, ask it. This is the most disgusting thing I've ever seen, and if I didn't take the time to go through it, I would never know. I mean, you haven't, we're going to meet at 12:00 noon, but we met at 9:00 PM.
And I have a comment and a motion to me. I do realize that I was the one that made the motion to approve the minutes for the meeting. I take responsibility for not noticing that part as far as commissioners being there. In that instance, I probably looked at what it was that we had covered to ensure that part of it was correct. I do make a motion that, there's one left, that, because I know all of us keep notes and wrote down times and stuff like that from previous minutes or meetings, hopefully they're still in the office, so I make a motion that those are gone through, and then at some point, we'll have to make an amendment, come in and approve an amendment to the minutes for that.
So I'm sorry is the, is the result of this. Oops, I'm, oops, my bad.
I mean, I'm not saying oops, my bad, but I am taking responsibility for it. It's, listen, I completely agree with-
You're a public official, you're a voter registrar. For goodness sakes, this is pathetic.
For one moment, if I could just, from a county commissioner perspective, we will look into this.
With all due respect-
If I can just-
Ms. Herschel, with all due respect, they should have looked into the minute they were, that the commissioners were not, were back on the election board, or they should have looked into it anyway. To actually put this in writing, coming out of the Susquehanna County courthouse and calling it an official document is a fraud. And paying people to do it, no less. People who are supposed to know what they're doing.
Yeah. We will, we will investigate that, thank you.
When will we find out what the investigation has shown, please?
Audrey's people first, please.
When documents are typed, generally, the initials of the person typing the documents are somewhere on the page, and I have not noticed that anywhere.
That's a good thought.
That's an excellent point.
Secondly, I have a question as to why the voter registration meetings are on tape.
It's a good question. I'll have an answer to that, I'm sorry.
That could be something that we could-
Lack of transparency is a good answer.
I thought they were, actually.
They are not secret meetings, correct?
No, they're not. They're open for public, they're advertised.
They should be open, they should be.
If I may, I believe there is a motion on the table, and there hasn't been a second that has opened anything up to discussion yet. There you go.
And we've got to get some order back to this. If we can come back to that, and then Sarah-
Okay, so the motion that the notes from the other meetings should be reviewed and update the actual meeting minutes for record, and then at some point, we will have to come back and prove that, or I don't know how you guys handle that, something that you will just approve the amendment to them. So that they need to go back, the notes need to be gone through and corrected. Second for that.
Second.
All right. I also have another motion in approving these minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. We have to- I also make another motion that in correction to the November 8th, 2019 minutes, it says that the meeting was called to order at 10:00 AM and it adjourned at 9:45 AM. That meeting actually started at 9:00, and we were out by 9:15.
Okay. So with that changed, do I have a second to that motion?
A second.
Is it all favor?
Yeah.
And I would like to make a motion that the county commission look into this thoroughly and report the findings when we discover what went wrong to the public in the near future, but with no time allowed in, as I don't know what that time will be. So if I can please make that motion.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye.
Yes.
Does this mean that we're going to rewrite history, and we're going to obliterate what we already have, or are we going to incorporate what we have with what really should have been, so that there is a record of both things that occurred? Because I have copies of the minutes, and I'm willing to publish them, because this cannot stand. So unless you're going to be going back and saying, this is what we said, and this is what we really should have said, and initial it and sign it, because these things aren't even signed, even after they're approved, and they're going into the wherever, and they're not signed, nobody, I mean, it says you approved it, but we don't have a signature. I mean, are we read, the question down on the table is, are we rewriting history, or are we going to record history properly and say, this is where we screwed up? Because that's what has to happen.
I think we do definitely understand your concern, and I too agree, and I can't speak for Commissioner Arnold.
Take responsibility for it.
But I believe the integrity of our courthouse and the transparency and the honesty is of utmost importance to myself, and if I could speak for Commissioner Arnold, Commissioner Ellen Hall is not here to do that. All I can say is that we will look back, and from here, from this point, I will guarantee that we will do what we can to ensure that you are all aware of what's going on in a very honest, transparent way. Okay? How we handle this, how we tackle that, what that course of action is, that's something that we will have to decide. I think that it is great that we have these conversations where we can openly discuss this and hold each other accountable. Were there mistakes that were had? There may have been. It might not have been done intentionally. That is no excuse, I understand that. But I believe we take what mistakes or errors had happened in the past, and we work from that so that we can improve this. Having a better system in place where you have faith in us, can trust what we're doing, is of the utmost importance. That's why we do this. I think meetings like this are great. We learn from you. Of course you're coming in, we hear you, we understand, we do. And let's work together to make this a better situation. But we're not faulting you, we're not saying you're wrong, we're not saying that you're not justified, 100 percent. But we will, we will do our job to look into that to make sure that this doesn't happen, and we will report to you what we come up with.
Ms. Herschel, on the, on that statement that you are not saying that we're wrong, we have the proof that we're not wrong. We have the proof that you are wrong. And we also ask you, and you, and you, and all of them. We want transparency, and we're entitled to it, because we're all your, we pay your salaries, number one. Number two, when you ran for office, you ran on the basis that you were going to be transparent. We expect that.
Absolutely.
And there is no reason on God's green earth that this should have come out. There is no reason why these things should have appeared the way they do. This is a haphazard, lackluster, lackadaisical approach to doing a job. And not only that, it's a, it's a fraud.
And I don't want to, I want to also reiterate that we do agree with you, but we are now going in circles with what we're saying. We've got to start to wrap this up. Go ahead.
When you finish going in circles, would the commissioners please consider advertising in local newspapers? Not Owego, not Scranton, not Bradford County. Put it on the website.
On the website.
It's a deliberate obfuscation. It's probably been going on for a long time. And I know you're new, et cetera, et cetera, and Commissioner Arnold, this is her second term. But this is sort of like the swamp, or the deep state that runs in the courthouse, because you are the power brokers, and this is unacceptable.
Finding a lot of this stuff out in lieu of the last commissioners' meeting, who also had a bit of voter fraud, with voters being turned away from the voting system, I sure hope that with all of that combined, this whole system is going to have a whole overhaul. Because what I've heard in these last two meetings is very upsetting. And I hope that it pisses everybody off.
We agree. Okay, and we have a meeting on Friday, we're looking into everything, we're trying to do the best we can, and we're going to keep moving forward and working on it. And we're working with the chairs of the parties, and we're brainstorming and trying to figure out better ways to do it all.
I just, I want to ask just for the position, is this Sarah Sisson?
It is.
I'd like to know what your position is on the board, to make that public. Your name, and what is your position?
My name is Sarah Sisson, and I was Betsy Arnold's fill-in on the election board for this last election year. But we're not on it now, but we were approving the meeting minutes from when we were sitting as the election board.
And so are you still on the election board?
As of right now, no. Because the commissioners are-
And were you, besides being on the election board, did you have a title, like director or?
Not this year, no ma'am.
Or that, in the past?
I do not work, yeah, prior to this-
Prior, what was your title?
I was the director of elections.
Director of elections.
She's an R4H educator.
Correct. I no longer work for the county.
Okay, director of elections, that's when all these allegations were made, you were director.
No.
No, no.
I quit working for the county in January, the beginning of January 2019.
You quit, okay, quit 2019, okay.
So I-
And so who was the director then, since January 2019?
Macy Rudak is currently the director of elections for Susquehanna.
And is she here?
No, she's not. She's out on maternity leave.
Who's taking her place?
Yeah, who takes her place when she's on maternity leave?
Melissa's running the office. No.
Melissa, and what is her last name, Melissa?
Melissa Brundt. May I give a motion to close the election board? And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The commissioners' meeting is now closed at 10:07.
Is it a commissioners' meeting, or is it election board?
I'm sorry, election board meeting. I apologize. Correction. I closed the election board meeting.
You guys are paying attention to that stuff.